Well, good evening, everyone. It is seven o'clock, and I'd like to call and lead into order. First, I'd like to... City Clerk, would you please call the row?
Thank you. Councilmember Anderson?
Here.
Bell?
Here.
Councilmember Bokey?
Here.
Councilmember Anderson has not joined the meeting. Councilmember Farmer?
Anderson?
Here.
Excuse me, Councilmember Branstadter, I apologize. Councilmember Farmer is attending virtually. And Deputy Mayor Moss?
Here.
And Mayor Whalen has been excused. You have a quorum.
Thank you. Please stand. And first, we're going to do a moment of silence in honor of our Ukrainians, and then we'll do a place to the link. My congratulations to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, a nation of God, invisible liberty and justice for all. Thank you. First on our agenda is proclamation and presentations. And tonight, we have a presentation. And I would call on Betty Capancino? Capastrano from Pierce County Economic Development Department. Thank you. I'm sorry, I butchered your name. I'm sorry.
Hey, Director of Economic Development for Pierce County. And I'm here to talk to you about the Pierce County Business Accelerator and kind of a check-in since it's about six months since we started the program. But I, first of all, want to give a really big shout out to Lakewood because you added ARPA money and with the county's ARPA money to be able to extend the program to more Pierce County Business Accelerator attendees. So I'll tell you a little bit about the program for those that aren't connected to it. The first part is it is ARPA-funded. You'll see up there, Lakewood's logo is right up there with also our program administrator, which is the Tacoma Chamber of Commerce. We have community partners that are Asia-Pacific Cultural Center, Black Collective, ME Central, Tacoma Urban League, and also Korean Women's Association. So we have a great network and outreach for our program. And the program actually stemmed from things that we saw during the pandemic, during the CARES program. And we saw during that program, we had a lot of really, really small businesses and also a lot of our BIPOC businesses, which are Black, Brown, Indigenous, People of Color businesses, women-owned and veteran-owned. It didn't maybe receive the full amount of support or they needed more support to be able to move forward after the pandemic. We also saw that there are a lot of different programs out there across the country. But we think this one is actually unique, something that hasn't been done before, the way we put the package together, which I'll kind of outline that for you right now. So the piece that I think makes it unique is... This part is not unique, sorry. They go in cohorts of about 25 businesses. And those cohorts meet for six weeks. They meet twice a week in the evenings, usually six to eight. Our Korean and Vietnamese cohort actually met in the morning because they preferred the early morning time. So the cool thing is that cohort, they learn to work together. They have a business curriculum. They have coaches. They have instructors. We do different languages if we need to have the different languages. And there's a lot of one-on-one mentorship. But we found that cohort, there's really a lot of gelling that's gone on. And I'll give you some of those success stories. The other thing that's really unique is after they graduate, they will have learned through that process how to raise capital. And the capital can be either through the Kiva platform that we help them on, which is a crowdsourced platform that's across the globe that people contribute money into. It could be from friends and family. It could be from a whole variety of different places. And we have a lot of really great success stories that we'll give you and some of the benchmarks on that. But the thing that's really unique is that then we match dollar for dollar up to $10,000. So most small businesses, to get $20,000 of working capital, to be able to take them to the next level, is really, really critical. So we're thrilled that we're able to do that piece. And we really work with the businesses to try to use that for capital, to do something new, something different, and how they grow their company. The other part that's unique is we saw many of them during the pandemic needed specific services, but it can't be just one service for everyone. So they have different professional services that they can use up to $5,000. And these are based on hours. So, for example, if someone needed help on QuickBooks or basic accounting that was more bookkeeper, they may get 40 hours of service. If someone needed legal because they have some patent they need, maybe they only get 10 hours of service based on those billable hours. So there's their coach and mentor. They come up with a 90-day plan. And then they get that professional services. And they could use it up to a year after they graduate, just like they can access their capital. They have a whole year to raise that after they graduate for us to match it. The other part that we saw is how do we help lower expenses? And the expense that really is one is rent. So if they have a commercial lease, so they have to have a commercial lease, and we look at their lease agreement, we help reimburse $500 of that if they pay at least $500. So we go dollar to dollar up to 500. But we do it every month for a year. So that program, so hopefully, if we've helped them save on expenses, get additional resources to help them grow their companies, get capital, and they have a network of people that they are in a cohort together that they will learn, they'll help each other business-wise. So those are the pieces that I think are unique. And when we talk about capital, the thing that really stood out, I go to greet all of the cohorts and I go to their graduation. I don't get to be in the room other than that. But the thing that when we went to talk to them about the programs they get to access after graduation, in our first cohort, we had a gentleman from Tanzania that had only been in this country maybe about three years. And he was driving Uber and also an interpreter. But he's like, "My culture, you don't ask for money. I can't do this." And everyone in the class got around him and told him, "Here's how you do it. You put a QR code in your vehicle. You explain that you're a part of this program. You explain what your goals are." He was the first one to come in with $10,000 for us to match. And to me, those are the kinds of stories that just really give you goosebumps because you help someone learn how to raise capital in that program. So we've had so far 105 businesses participate in the program. We're about halfway through, so we have 95 more. So our last four cohorts will be June, July, August, and September. And those are all filled. So those last four cohorts will be a Spanish-speaking cohort, another Korean and Vietnamese cohort, and an English-speaking cohort. So you'll see from the 105 business owners, 91% are minority-owned businesses, 62% are women-owned, and 20% are veteran-owned. You'll see how they break down based on race. And the thing that really we're very, very proud of is our Black population was so far has been 46% of our participants. And when we looked at our CARES resources, our Black population was one of the lower that received funding during CARES. So there's been a great outreach from our community partners to make sure we're getting access across the board. You'll also see the different stages. So this program even lets people be a startup in it. So you'll see the different stages of where the companies are at. And you'll see also a breakdown of council districts and locations and the different industries. So there's really a nice synergy of different kinds of industries. And we tried to match that up when we put the cohort together so there's a cross-section of information. The piece overall, if we're looking at the 105 graduates, and this is a little bit confusing, so I'll try to walk through it so you can understand it. Of the 105 graduates, 66 have already raised their capital match. And so they have raised over $1 million on their own. And then we have matched $652,000 to that. So between the match from Lakewood and Pierce County and what they raised on their own, that's $1.67 million that these 66 companies have raised. And this is just the first three cohorts graduated in December. So this is still pretty fast timing for them to have raised that. Of those 105 graduates, 48 have started receiving their monthly commercial lease reimbursements. And so they have to apply for that every month, and it's for 12 consecutive months. So we've paid out $81,000 of lease reimbursements, and that equals 166 monthly stipends because they're all different kinds of dollar amounts. So I wanted to make sure you knew what that dollar was so you didn't just take the 48 and divide it by 81,000 and do your average for rents. This group has also had already, 45 of the graduates have had 177 professional service coaching hours. And 45 of them have done part of their professional service grant. So this is the bookkeeping, the legal, the marketing help. And that has equated to 490 hours of service. So if we look for Lakewood, and we thank you so much for your partnership. And Becky and Tiffany have worked really, really hard on your team with us to make sure on those pieces. And you will get, right now, I believe, we're probably a fifth of the way in on the dollars that you see because it's based on a reimbursement. So when we reimburse our partner, our administrator, the chamber, then we're able to send the invoices up to Lakewood. So you'll see those roll as people take use of the resources. So currently, you've had 14 business owners from Lakewood participate in the program. And you'll see that the breakdown, 93% are minority-owned, 50% are women-owned, and 21% are veteran-owned. And actually, two... Let me make sure I'm getting this right. One, two. Three of our programs have actually been held in Lakewood. So we've had one in Tacoma, one in Puyallup, and three have been held in Lakewood. So you're getting a lot of good coverage on that program part. From those, then of the 14, 10 of them have already received their capital match. So they've raised $142,000. And then we have matched $96,000, or you've matched, I should say. So then that's $290,000 worth for those 10 companies in capital. 10 of them have already also come in for their leases. And that's about 25 of the monthly stipends. So you've paid out about $12,500 on the lease stipend. Six of them have used 31 coaching hours. And five of them have used professional service hours, so about 64 hours. And we give the dollar amount because it's based on what services that they use. So those are some of the key pieces. I did want to show you a couple of things. We're receiving lots of great testimonials. In fact, last week, I went to the chamber, had an after-hour showcase. And quite a few of our accelerator participants either had little tabletop displays or they were there in the audience, participating, meeting people. And one of our participants won an award from the chamber, from the small business end. But also, one of our participants that started, it's a vegan dessert foods, she rebranded since she started. She was in Cohort One, I believe. And she's already picked up business from Microsoft and Amazon. This week, they're in Chicago, trying to get into the Chicago airport. And they couldn't find a kitchen, so they were using a church kitchen. So now they're working to find a commercial kitchen. So we're getting a lot of stories of people just having those connections snapped down for them. And we're figuring out how they can each leverage those opportunities. We also had one of our businesses that actually had been in business for a really long time, like 50 years. But it's one of those generational businesses. And when you think, okay, well, someone that's been in business for 50 years, I mean, they should have it all down by now. Well, the thing that's really cool about it is that business was more seasonal, tied to fairs and those kinds of things. Well, they were able, through the connections of this program, to do a tasting for a Vietnamese delegation. And the Vietnamese delegation liked it. And so, maybe it was Japan. I should make sure I get my delegations correct. And so they're looking at sending the sample over to Japan. And they've never done anything internationally, which would be a whole game changer for that company and for the daughter and granddaughter that are working in the business. So it's just really some cool stories that we're seeing. And we're trying to figure out a really good way to capture it. The piece that a lot of them want to do their things without a lot of spotlight on them until they get successful in that program. So we're working on ways of how do we tell that story so everyone can see it? And also, how can you see who they are so you can do business with them? So there's just, I don't know, I get so excited every day when you get to talk to them and you help them. And I look forward to you also being able to take advantage and meet the people that are coming through for Lakewood. So I'd be glad to answer. I know I go so fast on this because I just know it. I have it in my heart. I probably missed something big. So if any question I can answer for you, I'd be glad to answer it. And these are a few, this is just the first three cohorts. So you'll see some pictures of that. And we also, the thing that's very, very unique is every cohort's different. So the third cohort, which is the bottom one, that was our program with KWA. And so it was spoken in Vietnamese and Korean. They love everyone being involved and connected. And they love government. And they want government there and participating. Where the others, they don't necessarily want, didn't want government there. So it's just been very interesting in that process. And also, we are so thrilled because the group, our Latinx group, is the one that really got the least amount of services during the pandemic. And also, they've been hard to reach because of that disconnect with government. And our partnership with ME Central, we are thrilled because we've actually overbooked our Latinx Spanish delegation that will be starting. So we're just really glad to be able to reach out to a lot of the businesses in our community and help them grow. Because when they grow, they add jobs and they add economic vitality.
Any questions for my colleagues? Councilmember Bell?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Thank you. It's a great program. I have read about it a little bit. And I know some people that I think were looking into it. I wondered if there are specific deadlines that people need to for each cohort? Is that all on the website, I assume?
Okay, so so far, our cohorts are filled. We still have about 80 people that haven't been able to get in. But we've used the funding so far. So what we're going to do is finish these cohorts and then see if there are any other resources available. Our goal with the whole thing was after the ARPA resources were done, we were hoping that in two years, it would be sustainable out in the community. So whether those were banks or foundations or others would be able to step up and carry that program on.
Awesome, okay. And then my second question was, where did I go? So is there any resources for helping in writing the business plan?
Great question. Okay, so I'm going to move to a different topic. It's still an ARPA program. But we also have a community navigator program. And this program is through Pierce County, through our ARPA resources. It's a little bit, now that word's used everywhere. I almost wished I'd use a different word because it's getting confused with a lot of community navigators. But this is a unique partnership that all those entities I mentioned before, the Black Collective, ME Central, Korean Women's Association, Asia-Pacific Cultural Center, we actually have, they've all hired business outreach specialists that report into our economic development team. And they're out, and their whole goal is over two years, that they will reach out to 3,500 businesses that are in the rural, veteran, BIPOC that we haven't connected with. But through that process, our partner for rural is PLU. And so they're working both with military and rural. We've added also a spoke, which is PTAC, which currently PTAC is purchasing government procurement, and it's statewide. We actually have a person now that's focused just on Pierce County as part of this program. And the same with Business Impact Northwest. So they're kind of a step above crowdfunding, a step below SBA. They help with a lot of financial acumen. They're part of this program to help all of our businesses in Pierce County. But the last piece, which goes to your question, PLU were, and this is kind of super secret because it hasn't launched yet, but they're actually putting together, I guess you'd call it curriculum, that would be 24/7 on-demand accessible for any of our businesses in Pierce County. And it's around key platforms, which Business Plan is one of them, that they can go online and go through a series of classes that are instructed by BIPOC people that know the language, that know the program, can walk them through that. And when they finish, they'll get a certificate of completion that's branded with PLU in Pierce County as part of the ARPA program. So we're hoping that having some of those resources help people. We do have a lot of coaches and instructors that are connecting in, both through the accelerator and to the navigator program. So if you have someone specifically that might need, we could figure out how we connect them in. Because the chamber is working on making sure there's mentorship for these businesses. That's another key thing, that they have a mentor for a year. And we're trying to track all of our accelerator graduates for three years because we want to really show that our resources have helped make a difference. Because we know if they can grow generational wealth, whether it's through businesses or through homeownership, that that will help make a difference for our community.
Councilmember Anderson?
Betty, you know, I'm familiar with the program and a big fan. I'm a big fan of the efforts of your department in facilitating this program. And I think you've set a model for many other communities. I'd like to point out that, in part, I think, because of Lakewood's early participation. But Lakewood has something like 7% of the county's population. And we see we have 15% of the participants in the program. We have a great concentration of small businesses here who can really take advantage of this. A lot of people don't have the immediate family or run up the credit card access to capital that struggling small businesses have, especially coming out of COVID. And I've talked to a couple of the successful graduates of this program. And they're enthusiastic about what they learned and what it did for their future. And it seems to be working. So I think, as Mr. Bokey has alluded to and other cohorts here on council, we would like to see something like this continue in Pierce County and in Lakewood. And so we're enthused about being partners for the future.
Well, thank you. And I think you'll see in the next group of 95, while I think your resources are for 15 or 16 participants, I think Lakewood's going to far exceed that benefit, so.
Thank you.
Councilmember Bokey?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Moss. Betty, thank you very much, and thank you for all your team has done. It's a great program and I think a good use of ARPA dollars. Couple of questions. On the services side, where we're paying that $5,000, I think you said, do you identify those folks to help them? Or do they find those people on their own? Is there a roster of people, like accountants, web designers? And I think you mentioned maybe lawyers?
That's a fabulous question, sir.
Oh, thank you.
Okay, so I think one thing that we've learned during the pandemic, we've had to pivot to make sure we could be accessible and things work. Originally, the plan was we would have a roster of everybody in Pierce County that wanted to, and we wanted to make sure we had BIPOC service providers. But we also wanted to make sure we had businesses that wanted to do that. The procurement process is not easy. It's very, very complicated. And it just became a little bit of a nightmare. So what we've done to make it easier, because the thing is, when we heard from our customer base, both the providers, it just was hard. So what we do is we have the coach, they go through their 90-day plan. And their plan outlines what they need, what kind of services. Then what we do is we reimburse them for that. And we have people that want to do business. So I guess we have, we're not recommending any companies, but there's a list they can go to to get matched up. Many of them have already connected with different providers that they might have met through their training and their classes. So we're hooking them up that way. But what we learned through the process also was, for example, the Vietnamese community, many of them use, and we're trying to keep everything in Pierce County. But in this case, many of them actually use a CPA in Seattle. And we thought, you know, they already have a relationship there. We're not trying to have them not have that relationship. So we've been trying to be flexible on those pieces. But we really encourage all the resources if possible to be done in Pierce County. So if someone says, "I can't find someone to help me with multimedia or to help redesign a website," then we have people that have said that they're interested. And then the chamber will work to connect them for that.
So I'd like a little more detail on, if you can, of the kinds of businesses that you're seeing. You kind of mentioned it in passing, but...
The kinds of businesses that are in the program?
Yeah. Is it just services? Or you mentioned people who do food, but...
There's a...
Is there manufacturing?
If I have the little pyramid, I can pull up for you. I probably won't be able to get your screen all the way back there. So of them, 27% so far of the graduates are personal services. 19% are accommodations and food services. 18% are retail. 14% are professional services. 4% are arts, culture, and entertainment. And 18% are others. So some of the others, actually, we have someone in cohort four. I think it's four, maybe it's five. I get them confused. I know they were the Puyallup location. And he has developed this really interesting hit. He's worked on this for five or six years. This really interesting hitch that would transform how fast cargo containers could be unloaded and reloaded when they're hitched up. So, and that's a really unique, that's a unique product that won't fit any box on anything. So we've had a lot of that. We've had a little bit of technology, not a ton. So that's kind of the breakdown that we've seen so far.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Well, thank you. It sounds like a great program. And it's definitely a good resource that we've needed for a long time in our area. So thank you so much for your report.
And we appreciate your partnership again. Thank you very, very much.
Thank you. Next, we have public comment. Public comments are accepted by mail, email, or virtual, or in person. And you can send comments in advance by mail, email to Brianna Schumacher for the city of Lakewood, 6000 Main Street. Is that on the... Yeah, showing on our screen here that the number to call in, the Zoom link for you to use. Any comments sent in prior, one hour prior to the beginning of our meeting is submitted to the clerk and provided to the council. So, City Clerk, do we have any call-ins?
Deputy Mayor Moss, we received no comments in advance of this evening's meeting.
Thank you. The virtual, the information for the virtual is there for the call-in, the IDs. And tonight, we're going to start from our virtual. Last week, we rotate. One week, we do in-house first, and then next week, we do the call-in. So tonight, we're going to start with the call-ins. And the first person I see with a hand raised is Bunchy Carter.
There we go. Okay, can you hear me?
I'm heavier, good.
Absolutely, okay. Well, of course, my name is Bunchy Carter. I am the Minister of Defense of the Black Panther Party of Washington. Man, it really bothers me that I don't get the opportunity right now to come be in front of all of you wonderful people. See, there's something that's been bothering me a little. And I really want to look at you while I tell you what's bothering me. But since I can't do that, I guess I have to take this opportunity. Since I started coming to city council meetings, I have constantly, without fail, every single time, mentioned the name Said Wahin. Just for the record, tonight's not going to be any different. However, there's something different that I would like to bring to the table. See, there was a point in time when we were talking about Said and our esteem. Oh, wait a minute, he's not there, never mind. But yeah, somebody said that, well, you know, it's out of our hands. There's nothing we can do. And I was like, you know what? You have a very valid point. But then Mary Robnett decided to go Mary Robnett all over the place. And we already know how that works. She has a very strong allegiance to that thin blue line. Therefore... Therefore, a crazed maniac of sorts just kind of gets to walk away. But not really. Because see, there is still the very real possibility of an independent investigator picking up this very same case and looking at all the things she chose to ignore and making the right choice. And that's what we've been pushing for. See, Governor Inslee is sitting down in Olympia, or wherever he may be, with his feet crossed, probably driving by right now. But that's not, we need him to do his job as a representative of the people. But being that you are the City Council of Lakewood, and Lakewood is where Said Joaquin was killed, by one of your police officers might I? The only thing that we would ask as an organization is that maybe if you really support the people and you're really about justice, and you're really about the right thing being done, maybe you support our efforts to get Governor Inslee to take a deeper look at this. See, it's not hard. We do it every single day. It's a matter of 45 seconds at the most. The letter's already been written with all of the facts that were ignored when she made her decision. All we ask is that you, as city council members, support the people and our hunt for justice. See, justice has been denied to everyday people since the inception of this country. And it's time to change the tide. I only have 13 seconds left. And with that 13 seconds, I would like to say, justice for Said Joaquin and all power to the people.
Next, we have Darcia. Darcieri Farmakis.
Good, good evening. So I kind of want to expand off of what my comrade Bunchy just said. I just want to say, you know, last council meeting, y'all did something new, which was that you actually responded to us. And what we heard from all of you with regards to all of the issues that we've been asking you to address is that you can't do anything. What we heard from the Council of Lakewood was, we can't do anything. We can't address your problems. We have no ability to help you. And my first thought about that is, well, then why are the people paying you? What's your job? But my second thought about that is, okay, so you don't have executive, you might not have executive authority over any given circumstance. But y'all are politicians, y'all have been doing this for a while. And you know that you have more strings you can pull than just your executive authority. You know, you say, oh, private entities want to cut down these Gary Oaks, and they bought the land to do that, and we can't stop this. Maybe not. But what's to stop you from calling them up and saying, hey, what's to stop each and every one of you from calling them up and saying, hey, if you do this, I'm going to call a press conference. And I'm going to tell the people who you are and that I disavow what you're doing and that I'm not going to take any more campaign contributions from you. If it's another politician doing it, a politician in Pierce County, for example. What's to stop you from calling them up and saying, hey, if you don't do right by my people when it comes to the library or whatever else, I'm going to do a press conference. And I'm going to tell my people who is screwing them over. And I'm going to tell you right now that I am going to campaign against you when you are up for reelection. That I'm going to be phone banking for your opponent. That I'm going to be telling people to vote for the other guy. See, there's more to politics than just signing pieces of paper, right? And you all know that, right? I mean, again, you have members on your council who have pulled all sorts of shady shit to, excuse me, to enrich their buddies. Got clever with that, got creative with that. But you won't do that for us. Right? You all know that there's more to politics than just what your executive power lets you do. Again, your word has clapped. And if you, to my comrade's point, if you started speaking up on these issues, that has power. And you've chosen not to exercise that power. So I don't want to hear these excuses about how you can't do anything. Because A, there are things you can do that you aren't doing. And B, if you can't do anything, then you don't need to have a job anymore. All power to the people.
I don't see any other hands raised. Oh, now we have.
Lysinta Immortal, Chief of Staff for the Panther Party. You, you know, a little extra credit about being, I guess you got a little bit more clever with the campaign you had last time. But I did a little digging into Mary Robnett's PDC C3 reports. And I found that was interesting is a lot of your spouses or your partners actually contributed to her campaign. But you guys didn't. So my question is, I mean, is, you know, Mayor Wayland's wife and Dawn Anderson's wife, I mean, are they like taking a knitting class together? Or do they know each other? Or, you know, it just, it just seems like, and then also, you know, Mr. Moss is on there. So it's, to me, you know, it doesn't, it seems like you guys are in support of Mary Robnett. And so I'm wondering on how partial you're able to be on, you know, decisions that she has made, such as in the murder of Said Joaquin. The other thing that's interesting is that the cop, you know, Mike Wiley, who, or who, sorry, killed Said Joaquin, he is also in your guys' Rotary Club. And you guys are all members. And it looks like you guys have regular meetings where you listen to each other speak. I just found all those little things very interesting because it sure seems like you guys are friendly with each other on not a, you know, a professional level or, you know, a political level, but like on a personal level. So we're going to be going to Inslee. We've already started writing letters. We're going to ask him to look into this case. We're asking for your support that this case be reopened. Because even though you do not have power, you do have the power to recommend something. You can call Inslee and say, we recommend that you open up this case or that you look back into this case because we're not sure that the investigation had all of the pieces in it. A lot of things that were left out of it. And so you can either stand by, you know, and pretend like, you know, you're not supporting, you know, that you're being, you know, whatever impartial to or partial to Mary Robnett's decision. But here, you're breaking bread with her, what, twice a month, looks like. Also, the Kent Nazi cops also contributed. Anyways, all power to the people, justice for Said Joaquin.
That's all the hands I see raised to talk, to speak tonight. So we will go to in-house. And the first person we have is Mr. James Dunlop.
My name is James Dunlop, and I'm a Lakewood resident. I want to start by commenting on Derek Camazell, who until recently was an Assistant Police Chief in the city of Kent. Derek Camazell was eased out of his position on account of his Nazi-related jokes, which caused a lot of offense, for example, in Kent's Jewish community. The city correctly decided that he had to go, even though they had to purchase his resignation for around $1.5 million. Yet, I have read that aside from his jokes, he had a good professional record. And however tasteless these jokes, no one got physically hurt. Compare that with Lakewood. In 2013, Leonard Thomas was shot by police. He was unarmed and holding a child. As a result, three Lakewood police officers had awards against them. $3 million against Michael Zarro, $2 million against Brown Market, and $1.5 million against Michael Wiley. All three officers remained on Lakewood's payroll. Lakewood indemnified them. So it was the city or its insurers who footed the bill. This raises the question of why the city council did not do everything in their power to have these officers removed. They might argue that they didn't have the authority. But you don't stand by while officers with seven-figure awards against them stay on the force. You do what you can to have them removed. And if that is not enough, you resign. And we now see the consequences of Lakewood's inaction. On May the 1st, 2020, one of those officers, Michael Wiley, shot and killed Said Joaquin. Wiley won't be facing criminal charges, but the civil case starts soon. This could be expensive for Lakewood. The jury may decide that the city was negligent in not removing Michael Wiley from its payroll for behavior which makes Derek Camazell's joking around seem trivial. Remember Wiley's comment after the Leonard Thomas shooting? It was a fricking million-dollar shot. We could see an eight-figure settlement, a figure which the city's insurers may not fully cover. So I have two questions. Firstly, has the city got, made a financial plan for a worst-case outcome? And secondly, why did you allow those three officers to keep their jobs?
Next, we have Christine Manetti.
Hello, councilmembers. My name is Christina Manetti, and I'm a resident of Lakewood. Tonight, I wanted to talk a little more about public trust. The library system, as we heard last time, it's already lost the public trust. And it's disrespected Lakewood's traditions. The charitable intent of the Tansler family, the memory of the architect, who was a veteran, and all of that stuff that we talked about already. It's also shown no respect for Lakewood's architectural heritage by allowing our award-winning building to fall into such disrepair. It's a disgrace. But then there's also the matter of the Ad Hoc Committee. The city is also in danger of losing, or it's perhaps already in the process of losing public trust. The city protests that it has nothing to do with the library, just like it doesn't have anything to do with, you know, police matters, suits, whatever. And the city council has professed to be just as shocked as the public. But then the city picked six of the 12 members of the committee. If it's not involved, then why does it control selection of half of the committee? You can't have it both ways. Either the city has an influence on what happens to the library or it doesn't. And then in one of the city council agendas, it says that this is because the city wants a senior center as part of the new library, although this hasn't been explained to the public either. Of course, this is misleading and suggests the city has some role to play in deciding the fate of the library. What it shows for sure is that the city has already been cooking up some scheme for the new library building, one it hasn't told the public about. The library we have is already the largest in the system and fulfills too many functions for a library. We don't need to have a senior center in it, too. Just let our library be our library. The fact that the city also decided to include on the committee an applicant who already stated something that was not true on her application, despite having been informed of this fact by a member of the public, me, is already, is also deeply disturbing to us. Is this how they choose new employees for City Hall, too? People can write down anything they want, be called out on it, and the city still chooses them? Not only has the library system lost the public's trust in Lakewood, the city is also in danger of losing it. So far, the whole affair has left a bad taste in the public's collective mouth, so to speak. You've insisted that you have no jurisdiction over the library, yet as the city council, surely you are elected to defend the interests of the people of Lakewood. In the questions of the environment, you have already shown over and over again that you strive to protect the interests of the almighty developers more than those of the people of Lakewood, our quality of life and our environment. We hope that the library situation does not prove this true again. The city also has lost the public trust as a result of the killing of Said Joaquin. When I tell people who don't live here what happened and that the police officer and the chief are still on the staff, I say, what kind of city do you live in, anyway? And I'm embarrassed. I'm ashamed of my own city, where I've lived since 1972. Can you please do something? I urge you to make amends quickly on all fronts and to take action to make sure that Lakewood's most beloved public institution and building is preserved, and also our self-respect.
Next, we have Matt McCarthy.
I'm Matt McCarthy. I'm a Lakewood resident. I want to talk about the library. But first, I want to say, justice for Said Joaquin. It's way overdue. So we don't have a library anymore. Why don't we have a library? Well, we don't have a library because of incompetence and corruption. They're going to tell us that we don't have a library because the roof is leaking. Well, friends, the library was closed for a year and a half due to COVID. Don't you think that would have been a good time to fix the roof? Okay? And then we're told that to fix the library is going to cost $11 million. $11 million to fix the roof of the library. How could that possibly be? What kind of a corrupt, you know, city council you got going here? And so I have the budget that works out to, you know, basically $11 million. And included in this budget, you have parking lot improvements, $270,000. Landscaping, $245,000. Sight lighting, $135,000. So you're talking $650,000 simply for the landscaping, the parking lot, and some lights. Okay? As we go down, we're taught, the new HVAC system, $1 million. Okay? Then, the best of it all, an elevator. One elevator that goes from the basement to the middle floor to the top. How much does that cost? $1.75 million. Okay? Then, on top of that, we have 15%. So all those figures that I just said, add 15% for over-budget contingency. Then we can add another 11% for consultation. Okay? So how much does it cost to actually fix the roof? By your own, like insanely inflated estimate here, it comes out to $476,000. So why don't you spend a half a million dollars, fix the damn roof, open the library? I'm sure you can come up with something to do with another $10.5 million, don't you think? You know how many problems we have in this country, in this city? That you people are just completely out in your head. You're just a bunch of corrupt, horrible, horrible people. And you need to all go. We're going to vote you all out, justice for Said Joaquin.
Just for the record, that is not the city budget. Next, we have Helen Wagner.
You're going to do $10 million. Then you're going to do the, whatever your senior plan is. You're going to have like $20 million.
Helen Wagner, please come forward. Helen Wagner.
Good evening. I'm Helen Wagner from Lakewood. And I was originally going to talk about an obituary for a truly magnificent oak. But lacking specific dates, I chose to give some of my reactions to the death of this tree, sort of eulogy. Late this spring, developers for a warehouse on the grounds of the former Oakwood Elementary School chose not to modify their plans when cutting Gary Oak trees to make way for their parking lot. The oaken question was probably about 400 years old. Its beautiful, craggy configuration of branches could have been right out of an Arthur Rackham illustration for a spooky fairy tale. This huge tree really spoke to me. Although I lived in that neighborhood, and all three of my children attended Oakwood, and indeed, I do still live close by, I cannot bear to drive past that empty spot. I know that I would need to pull over and cry. It appears that the proposed tree code for the city would have saved this beauty, for it would have been deemed significant, or perhaps a heritage tree. However, this was not to be. I will miss this tree and its surrounding oaks immeasurably. Trees invoke strong emotions. City planners, please treat our hearts gently. Thank you.
Next, we have Sean Hill.
Hello, I'm Sean Hill. I'm a Lakewood resident, a longtime volunteer, and a business owner. I wish I'd heard anything about the Business Acceleration Program. I heard nothing about it. I don't know any other business owners who heard anything about it. So more advertising would have been nice. I'm concerned that Lakewood is becoming gentrified as a whole. It seems like a lot of the projects are designed to cut out working people, like getting rid of the library, like building massive sidewalks and roundabouts that have cut off my particular neighborhood for the past two years. I live in Lake City, and there's endless construction. And apparently, the builders of the road don't think we have anything to do or anywhere to go. And they're wrong. It's been a hardship. Getting rid of the library, to me, seemed like it was more about getting rid of the homeless. So in that vein, I wonder what's happened to them? Where are they? Do any of you know? I don't know, but I imagine they're still in the neighborhood. And I wonder what's being done for them. I also wonder how much federal money was used to redo all these roads and to build 10-foot sidewalks that I have pictures of contractors parking on. And I wonder why that's not a concern. Not everyone has high-speed broadband. Not everyone has a car. We need walkable areas, but we don't need 20-foot sidewalks. We need the library, and we need some attention paid to regular, working-class people and our needs. And I don't feel they're being addressed properly. I'm in agreement with some other people who say, "Let's vote you all out." And a lot of these names have been on the council or in our government perennially. So if you're still here, we need more. Or maybe there's time for you to go. Thank you.
Next, we have Yasmin Smith.
Hello, my name is Yasmin Smith, and thank you for having me. I've been a longtime community member since the late 1960s, dating myself. I've went to all the schools, from elementary to high school. I graduated from Lynx High School. And I worship here at St. Mary's across the street from Clover Park School District. And I'm very vested in this community. And I did speak at the last meeting about my concerns about closing the Lakewood Library and that it's absurd for a city not to have a library. I'm concerned that there hadn't been transparency leading up to the closure. I would like for the city council to use some type of leverage with the county, the Pierce County Library Systems. I know that you've given hundreds of thousands of dollars for Telecom Library. Why Telecom and not Lakewood? Lakewood is where we're at. You are Lakewood City Council, and the Lakewood Library is a historic landmark. Historic. It's award-winning historic landmark. It's a safe place for kids to go. It's a hub of the community. I'm also concerned about the trees, the oaks, and our environment, and your commitment to our community's environment. The Fish and Wildlife Department said you should not cut down the oaks. The wildlife are grazing in our yards. I've got deer grazing in my yard and in my neighbor's yard because we have taken away their habitat. Lakewood has built so many, as my predecessor had said, gentrified. We've gotten so many new housing developments where houses are going for $600,000, $800,000, $900,000 in new gated communities. Plus, we have Lake, Stillicum, American Lake, Gravelly Lake, Lake Louise. There's a lot of money here in Lakewood. We should have a Lakewood Library. And I would like the city council to tell the city, the community members, what you are doing to assure that we have a library. I have many signatures of community members who are outraged.
Next, we have a do, and I cannot read your last name. And I don't want to mess it up, so. I don't mind saying it. I just can't read your last name.
Oh, I was talking to them. I wasn't talking to you. Don't worry. My name's Ado Equitas. I'm the chairman of the Panther Party. So I've come multiple times. I've been talking here for almost a year now, and I've been talking about the gentrification of the city and how businesses are being pushed out for large conglomerates and the rest of the BS that y'all got on to. And maybe I'm just a big angry white dude. I'm more than that. I'm that, but I'm more than that. You got business owners now saying they don't trust you. Homegirl that was reading the program said, "Oh, this group really, really wanted to be involved." The other two groups, hmm, not so much. They didn't really want government involvement. Why do you think that is? It's because y'all are taking their businesses and building houses that people ain't living in right now. But the housing numbers continue to go down, and the houseless numbers continue to go up. And obviously, the people don't know where the houseless people are, and it all seems like a problem. So while Mayor Wayland wants to go on vacation, we got plenty to do here. And as always, you are failing. But I'm going to give you guys a chance to reinvigorate the community. Because like my boy Bunchy was saying, I was talking to him, and I was like, "You know what? We've been pressing Inslee to get this done." And he just instituted a new officer to oversee independent investigation into cop cases. Patty, I'm sorry. I know you're tired. Don't worry, I'm going to be over quick. I saw your eyes going down a couple of times, even when the other people were talking. And now when I'm up here, I'm used to it. So we have that officer that's come in, and he's going to start leading these independent investigations. And I was like, "Bunchy, what if we got the Lakewood City Council to back the initiative?" Because we're not saying, "Hey, we want Mike Wiley prosecuted." We do, but that's not what we're saying. We're just saying that maybe Mary Robnett isn't quite the best person to make that decision because she's already shown her hand with Leonard Thomas. She already showed her hand with Manny Ellis. Oh, Manny Ellis got an independent investigation, and now some of them cops is going to court because they're murderers. Said Joakim didn't need to die. Mike Wiley did not need to kill him. Mike Zarro didn't need to cover his ass. Excuse my language. So we're going to make it happen with or without you. You have the opportunity to be on board. And if you ain't, oh my God, I'm going to love dragging you through the mud when we get it done because I'm going to make it worldwide known that we gave you the opportunity to step up. We gave you the opportunity to lead, and you said no. All power to the people.
That's all the names that I have that signed up. If there's anyone else in the audience that would like to make public comment, please come forward. Is there anyone else that would like to make public comment? Then I would declare the public comment closed. And next, we have our consent agenda. You can see, Madam Clerk.
A, approval of the minutes of the city council special meeting of May 31, 2022. B, approval of the minutes of the city council retreat of May 31, 2022. C, motion number 2022-45, authorizing the purchase of the Apex Officer Virtual Reality System. D, motion number 2022-46, authorizing the execution of an agreement with the Washington State Patrol for Philotomy Services. E, motion number 2022-47, acceptance of a $15,000 monetary donation from Amazon on behalf of the South Sound Military and Communities Partnership. F, items filed in the office of the city clerk. One, Landmarks and Heritage Advisory Board, corrected minutes of April 28, 2022.
Thank you. Is there any item on the consent agenda that anyone would like to have removed? Linda can vote.
Oh, she's on still. Okay. I move approval of the consent agenda.
Second.
Thank you. It has been moved and accepted, the consent agenda. Thank you. And we move on to our regular agenda. Is there any?
Deputy Mayor Moss, we need to take a vote on the consent agenda, please.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Thank you. The consent agenda is approved. Moving forward, we have new, any new business? Unfinished business? A regular agenda. Is there any unfinished business?
Under unfinished business, we have a review of the South Sound Housing Affordability Partners work plan. For this, we have Councilmember Farmer.
Councilmember Farmer.
Hi. Apologies for not being there in person and not being on camera. I had a medical procedure that causes me to be at home tonight. Thank you for the opportunity to talk to you again about the South Sound Housing Affordability Partners. As a quick reminder, SHAPE is made up of 15 jurisdictions, including Pierce County, 13 cities, and the P'Alp Tribe. The mission is to create and preserve affordable, attainable, and accessible housing in Pierce County. And in your packets is the draft work plan. This is about the third time you've seen it, and we've had the opportunity to talk through it at our recent housing and our housing retreat. The executive board, the SHAPE Executive Board, is slated to discuss and hopefully adopt the plan at its next meeting on July 1st. And I wanted one last opportunity for the council to give any questions, concerns, or changes that you may have so that I can bring them to the executive board. There are five strategic priorities, four of which are substantive, and one is more administrative in nature. And most of the items that you see there on those couple of slides are tasks that are due to be completed by the end of this calendar year. So Deputy Mayor, if you would be so kind as to call on your colleagues. You're so far away, I can't see any hands.
Are there any questions for Councilmember Farmer? I see no questions at this time.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Farmer. Is there any new business, Mr. Coffield?
Under new business, we have motion number 2022-48, authorizing the city manager to execute the Nisqually Jail Services Agreement. For this item, we have Assistant Police Chief John Hunfred.
Good evening, Deputy Mayor, council. I'm presenting to you the new contract with the Nisqually Tribe for Nisqually Jail Services. Previously, our contract had expired in 2018. We had been negotiating prior to that, and there were some roadblocks along the way, including COVID and some other things. You've seen the request for council action. Some of the basic highlights of the contract is the single flat rate of $130 per day per inmate. Originally, they proposed four different rate categories for mental health and medical and so on, and it just got really problematic. So we settled on a flat rate. It includes a 5% annual increase each year and has two automatic five-year extensions unless terminated in writing by one of the parties. So it's potentially a 15-year contract. New in this one also is the city will pay medical costs incurred outside of the jail. Anything that's inside the jail, they will cover, and that is after private insurance is billed. The insurance amount in the contract increased from $3 million to $10 million, and the sovereign immunity language from the last contract remains unchanged. Should be noted as well that the Nisqually Jail has made some significant improvements in their services since 2018. They've incorporated 24/7 onsite medical staff. They've incorporated medical-assisted treatment, which is used to medically reduce the effects of withdrawal symptoms from certain narcotics. And there was a court ruling that requires that be provided in jail settings. They've also increased staff training and facility modifications to increase their ability to handle mental health inmates. We looked at alternatives, and really, the only other jail in the county that is accepting misdemeanor inmates is the Pierce County Jail. Otherwise, we'd have to look at Score and Des Moines, Thurston, or Kitsap County, which are really just too far for us to travel. Included in here, I did do a rate-cost comparison between the Pierce County Jail and the Nisqually Jail. The Nisqually Jail does not charge a booking fee. It is straight, flat, daily rate. The Pierce County Jail, their daily rate is slightly lower, but they charge a booking fee, and they also have a mental health rate. So if an inmate qualifies and has to get moved to a mental health wing, then we get charged that higher rate. The other problem with the Pierce County Jail, particularly the last couple of years due to COVID, is that they have drastically restricted the bookings into the jail to keep their population low. So for the most part, it's been violent felonies only and DOIs. So it's been hard to, impossible to get misdemeanor bookings in there. Whereas the Nisqually Jail has continued to accept virtually all of our misdemeanor inmates. It's been a couple of times where they had to slow down due to COVID, but otherwise, they've continued to take those. That's a significant benefit to the city. If you look at our misdemeanor offenses, you're talking about domestic violence, DUI, public nuisance, and those types of crimes. So having Nisqually Jail open and available to take inmates has been a significant benefit for the city. And so our recommendation is to authorize the city manager to execute the agreement with the Nisqually Jail. I'd be happy to take your questions.
Any questions for Chief Hunter? Councilmember Bogey?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Chief, thank you very much for this, and congratulations on, we're four years behind on this. Insurance increase from $3 million to $10 million. Ours or theirs? Is it their liability insurance or our liability insurance?
Theirs.
Theirs, okay. And so they present some proof of that, and I'm looking at council on that. And that's to basically cover them in this, if something bad hap- And that, and that's to basically cover them in this, if something bad happens. But they have sovereign immunity also, which we won't get into too much here tonight, but.
Councilmember Bokey, members of the council, the 10 million is preferred by our insurance pool. And there was a quick acceptance of that by the tribe. And the sovereign immunity language that this council pushed for primarily through the mayor at the time, Mayor Anderson, is the preferred language, again, by our insurance pool, and they're trying to use it as an example for other cities. But again, our position with the tribe was, look, this is the language that we've had in place for this amount of time, and they were agreeable to that. So they've, for purposes of something that would happen at the jail, they've waived the sovereign immunity, and they've got the insurance coverage. So that's the overall picture there.
Okay, okay. And have we had much in the way of issues in that regard?
We have had very few issues, and if I had to say, and you can either nod or bump me off if I'm wrong on this. What we've seen is a tribe getting into what for them has been a fairly new business. They've been very focused on customer service. They've been very cooperative as far as the video arrangements and things of that nature. As for the amount of time that it's taken to negotiate with them, they move at their own pace, and they have a different structure for their government. And so things just naturally take a different pace, and it was a pace that worked for everyone in this instance. And all along, they were very cooperative when the assistant chief would call them and say, look, we're without a contract, what are we doing? Their position was, we're fine, and they honored all the terms until we got to the final part of the agreement. This has truly been a little bit of an experience, learning to negotiate with a truly separate entity.
But, you know, and we should note that other, other cities and the state of Washington use them.
Correct.
Correct. I mean, we're not alone on this. It's not Lakewood's jail at Nisqually. It's Lakewood and Lacey.
Department of Corrections for the state of Washington is one of their biggest users.
Right.
City of Tacoma, City of Lakewood, City of Lacey. And I think there have been some learning experiences along the way as the tribe has learned that there's, there's some benefits to having a jail, and there's some, not as fun moments having a jail, but they, they really have worked to evolve as this has gone along.
Okay, thank you.
I would just add the, the points that I highlighted on the increase or improved services that they offer, the medically assisted treatment, the onsite medical staff, and the mental health wing all really help reduce liability for the city by providing those services.
Did they, excuse me, did, did they hire an outside contractor to provide those medical services? Do you know, or are they hiring themselves? Okay, so they hired a company that provides that kind of care. Okay, great, thank you.
Any other questions? Councilmember Anderson.
Well, congratulations, Chief, on bringing it home. And I recognize the long view that tribes in general have. Also appreciate the partnership we've had with the Nisqually Tribe on a variety of things. I think on that, on that note, we're kind of ahead of the curve. And I think that the jail contract and being a good customer has enhanced that relationship. I'm along, along with Mr. Whalen, we were the ones that rejected the first contract when it came up because it didn't have the correct language for sovereign immunity waivers and insurance, basically, how you're going to enforce it. And if something happens bad, how are you going to collect it? And it took about a year, if I recall correctly, for the, the tribe to accept the terms, the general proposition, the language. And then it was enhanced since then. And the only question I had for you was if there's any backtracking, it's actually improved. So I commend your, your work in that regard. And I have personally it writing in the front seat of a police car, getting down to the Nisqually Jail for intake. And I've personally been in the front seat of a police car, going to Pierce County Jail for intake. And I thought the Nisqually's went, they were very competitive, let's just put it that way, in their customer service. So congratulations.
Thank you.
Well, thank you for your report. And at this moment, can I have a motion to approve motion number 2022-48?
So moved.
Moved by Councilmember Anderson, seconded by Councilmember Bokey. Thank you so much. Can I get a vote? All in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? It is approved, thank you. Next, we have a report by the city manager, Mr. Coffield.
Good evening, Deputy Mayor and council members. Like to start off, unfortunately, Ms. Kraus, our deputy city manager and chief financial officer, she's not able to be with us this evening. So she's asked me to provide an overview of the first quarter financial report, which covers January through March of 2022. Like to touch upon some of the key highlights. So overall, our general, I'm going to focus primarily on the general fund. Our general fund revenues are exceeding budget by 1.275 million, or almost 11, 11%. Essentially, all revenue sources are, are all major revenue sources are exceeding expectations. Particular focus on sales tax and gambling tax dollars, as well as development services fees. We are beginning to see a slowdown in activity, particularly with our large projects, as we're hearing from developers saying issues regarding inflation, supply chain issues are beginning to have an impact. Would also draw your attention to our performance standards and page 135, that provides an overview of the development services activity, you know, through, through first quarter. While total valuation is down slightly compared to first quarter last year, actually, the number of permits is up. Also, the dollar amount, 26 million. You know, up until probably five or six years ago, we would do about 25 to 35 million dollars in a year. So here we are doing that amount in a, in a quarter. You know, at this point in time, it's to be determined whether or not we'll have the same level of investment that we had the last couple of years where we're at 160 million or so, but still, it's going strong. Also point out, it's evenly split between commercial and residential. The latter being, continuing to be a little surprise, but if you get down into the detail, it's really being driven by remodels and repairs. So people repairing and remodeling their existing facilities as opposed to tearing them down and, you know, something else going in there. Likewise, on the commercial side as well, a lot of commercial remodels. So a lot of businesses remodeling their, their businesses. And back to the finances, development services as a, as a, as an entity, the cost recovery ratio through first quarter is 78%. That's a little lower than our target of 85%, but again, we measure that on an annual basis. But if we go back the last five years, we're at 93%. So we're, I do expect us to at least meet or exceed on a year-to-date basis our, our cost recovery there. Also, on fines and forfeitures, camera enforcement within our school and speed zones has jumped up. We attribute that just to the increased traffic, kind of post-pandemic, as people are out and about more on, on the roadway. You know, a couple of areas that, that are, that are down a little bit. One is state shared revenues. However, that's driven solely by lower high-crime criminal justice monies, which fluctuates very heavily. That's actually a good sign because that means we are not as considered as high-crime city as perhaps we have been in the, in the past. So that's actually a positive. Also, our parks and recreation fees through first quarter is a little slower than anticipated. And again, I think people are coming back into activities and programs. I would expect that that would pick up later in the second and third, in the third quarter. Also, within our municipal court, fines and forfeitures are down. However, if you look at the detail, criminal citations and infractions are way, way down. I mean, we only had through first quarter, 204 infractions come through the court, whereas in 2015, we had almost 3,200. So again, just a reflection of, of what's going on out there. So again, overall, you know, compared to budget, we're doing well. General fund revenues compared to where we were last year have also grown by over 700,000 or 5.9%. The one area of concern that we have is in the area of sales tax, which has dropped 2%. However, that's after a jump of 20% in 2021. The area of concern is that in first quarter of this year, our retail trade component, which comprises about 47% of our total sales tax, has dropped $221,000, which is, that's pretty significant. So again, you know, we attribute that to people kind of slowing down on their spending and things along those lines. However, services and wholesale trade is up by double digits. So that's a, that's, that's, that's a positive. But again, you know, thinking that, you know, we're coming from a much higher benchmark. But again, it's something that we need to keep a close eye on as we continue out into second, third, and of course, fourth quarter. On the expenditure side, you know, basically, all departments are under budget. Overall, our general fund is under budget by about six, a little over 6%. However, compared to last year through first quarter, our costs have increased over $1 million, or about 11%. And again, that's driven by personnel costs and healthcare and things, things along those lines. But again, overall, the city's finances are, are strong through first quarter. Again, we do have some concerns, just generally speaking, as it relates to the economy. You know, we're hearing all these rumblings out there about doom and gloom. Not going to get into that. I prefer to focus on the glass being half-full as opposed to half-empty. And also, let's, let's control what we can control. So that's kind of our perspective as, as we are, where we are, as well as we look to develop the 23, 24 biennial, biennial budget. Also, a couple of things to point out on the report. As you know, Ms. Kraus is constantly updating this report. And one area is page 44, which outlines our dangerous buildings and public nuisances that we have out there that our housing team is regularly focused on and working on, and so keeping a running total on that. And as, you know, their, their perspective are public nuisances and abatements. Page 44, it's page 44 of the, the financial report. But we, you know, our team is very, very persistent in, in, in getting those properties addressed. As a matter of fact, the building over on the 3800 block of Silicon Boulevard is in the process of being taken down. Also, most of these abatements and public nuisances are being handled by the property owners as opposed by the city, which is also, you know, a, a good thing. And then, you know, you might have noticed that one of our perennial projects, we were able to finally to get an abatement order through the courts. And by the way, that's been a bit of a roadblock, working through the courts as the courts are opening up to get our abatement warrants. But the one at Silicon Boulevard and Gravel Lake Drive, the old Lotus Building, has finally been, has finally been demolished. So, so we continue there. On the ARPA, on the ARPA front, you know, we have, we have, we have some information in the financial report outlining that. You know, earlier this evening, you heard from Pierce County, you know, the city has been partnering with them on our BIPOC program. And what we'd like to do is actually invite in other organizations you have provided funding to. And as part of your July 18th, we're trying to line up, trying to line up the Tacoma Pro Bono Association, which has been doing some good work here in Lakewood, as well as Lehigh with Aspen Court, and then also the school district to talk about their mental health services program for the youth, and inviting them to come in, just as you heard from Pierce County, to talk about what they've been doing and with the ARPA funds that you have allocated. And then later on in the summer, we'd like to invite back in Habitat for Humanity, Rebuilding Together, South Sound, the YMCA, and the Boys and Girls Club. And I think the latter two would be timely because it's kind of getting, you know, they'll be into the summer, spring and summer months in terms of what's going on there. Lastly, again, under the umbrella of Ms. Kraus and her team working to constantly improve and add on to this quarterly financial report, the performance measures are going to get a facelift. You know, right now, they're fairly static, just focusing on where we are at this point in time. And so our assistant to the city manager and policy analyst, Michael Vargas, is in the process of actually developing, you know, a, a report that illustrates activity going back two, three, four years, and then activity through first quarter and second quarter, and third quarter, and so forth, to kind of put those performance measures in, in perspective. And then, of course, as part of our biennial budget process, we will be taking another comprehensive look at those measures to truly identify, okay, what's important, what's needed, what's not, as it relates to both the council and, and the community. So with that, Ms. Kraus does send her regards. And certainly, if there's any questions, Deputy Mayor, I'll try and answer them. If not, we can get back to you with the specifics.
Any questions? Councilmember Anderson.
Thank you. I have some, you can get back to me for us, questions, that's from Ms. Kraus. What are we, the first one is, what, how much are we ahead of budget net? At this point?
Ahead of budget?
You know, our, our budgeted income, budgeted expenses results in a net?
Combined, almost $2 million, Councilmember.
About two, about $2 million.
Yes.
Do you have a projection, or can you provide a projection for the remainder of the year if sales tax revenue is flatlined?
We, Councilmember, we're currently in the process of working on that in advance of the biennial budget, but also as part of updating our financial forecast. We hope to have something available later this summer about the August timeline is what we're shooting for.
And at the same time, perhaps one that builds in a, something like a half a percent a month inflation on the cost, non-labor cost side?
That, all of those issues will be factored into the financial forecast, Councilmember.
And I have just a comment on a totally different element of the budget with respect to CARES Act and ARPA money. I had the occasion to sit down with our state auditor this last weekend on a couple of occasions who I know fairly well, socially turns to business. The state auditor's office has brought forth an initiative, a work initiative or project initiative on their part, where they will be auditing recipients of federal CARES Act and ARPA money for compliance. Now, the first level of compliance is not what they're concerned about. That is, if you make a grant, you say, you'll reimburse somebody, a sub-recipient for X, Y, and Z, and X, Y, and Z, they invoice you for X, Y, and Z, and you look at it and you see that, you know, those are reimbursable under CARES or ARPA. The second level, which they're going to be looking at, is whether they actually, you actually watched to make sure the sub-receipients were doing something. Perhaps even with what's really a bugaboo in the human services industry, performance metrics. Did they actually do any good? Did the people actually hire people? Are you checking to see if they're doing that? And she also made the rather troublesome prediction that their auditor at the state level will probably show that the state owes the feds about $800 million. Now, that's so big that it, it's unlikely that the Biden administration would try to collect it from the Inslee administration. But it still is a troubling indication of, of non-compliance across the board. So in this case, I don't think we have to outrun the lion, we just have to outrun Seattle, people like that. So just a cautionary note that that's lurking in the, in the wings and to cause Ms. Kraus some extra headaches.
Councilmember Bokey.
Yeah, and on the ARPA, on the ARPA subject, I would note today, I, something came across at work from the National Association of Counties that said that Treasury has, has come up with some further guidance on, on expenditures and, and what Councilmember Anderson's talking about, the, the, the paperwork behind that. So you might want to take a look at that to see if it's changed anything significantly on how things need to be reported. I didn't really get into the details, just, I sent it to our ARPA guy to take a look at, but and your, and staff may already be aware of the, of the changes, but just, just to make sure that we're all on the same page. And we stay in good stead with Treasury. And it was US Department of Treasury that came up with it.
And we stay in good stead with Treasury, and it was U.S. Department of Treasury that came up with it. So if we could do that, that would be great.
Well, it's good to hear that our budget is in good standing. So thank you for that. And thank Pa, we missed her, but thank you.
Well, and then, if you please, the council, next up, I'd like to call up our economic development manager, Becky Newton, and she would like to review with you the multifamily tax exemption conditional certificate and contract for a new mixed-use project here in our downtown, albeit a small one called Bristol Apartments. Ms. Newton? Just like to point out, she's here on her day off as well, her vacation.
Thank you, Mr. Caulfield. Good evening, Deputy Mayor Moss and members of council. As mentioned, I'm presenting this evening on a small multifamily tax exemption application for Bristol Apartments in the downtown. In your packet included is the project application from the applicant, the site plan, as well as a draft resolution, a draft conditional certificate, and a draft agreement regarding the residential target area development. The community and economic development staff has completed the design review for the new Bristol Apartments proposed at ninety-six fifteen Bristol Avenue Southwest. The proposed project is in substantial compliance with the community's design and development standards outlined in section eighteen A sixty oh four oh of the Lakewood Land Use and Development Code, as well as Title eighteen B for the downtown development subarea. This is a three-story mixed-use building with a commercial unit on the ground floor and seven units of residential. The site is located within the central business district residential target area, and it's also located on a mixed-use street per the regulating plan map of the downtown plan. The application is for a twelve-year exemption in order to allow for affordable units. The twelve-year exemption requires a minimum of twenty percent set aside for low-to-moderate income individuals and families. The applicant is intending to set aside a hundred percent of the units for low-to-moderate income. Low-income household means a single-person family or unrelated persons living together whose adjusted income is at or below eighty percent of the median family income, median family income adjusted for the family size. So for example, a family of four, the income could be up to eighty-one thousand, two hundred dollars. For moderate income, median family income may be up to a hundred and one thousand, eight hundred, regardless of the number of persons in the household. There, as I mentioned, there are seven units of residential. They're all one-bedroom units. And there is one office proposed on the ground floor. There are four units of garage parking and additional, that's an additional cost to the residents who take the garage units. There are also private balconies, and this is the first, first mixed-use project within our downtown plan. These just show the various elevations from each side. The one to your right, which is noted as the west elevation, is what you will see coming in on Bristol as you turn into the complex. It does include the Colonial Center overlay treatment with grit, brick included on the, the unit or the building. And that has been added to, to comply with the requirements of eighteen B. Applicant will also install curb gutters, sidewalks, and landscaping per our code. Calculations are estimated for this exemption. The orange line represents the revenue with the tax exemption. The blue line is without, so if, without the project. Year two is showing a bump up because that includes our permitting fees. Year four through fifteen, estimated tax exemption period on the new residential units. And beginning twenty-twenty-five, fees assume to be based on a full seven-unit occupancy. The next chart is of the regional revenue chart. Year one through three showing costs during the project development. Revenue with tax exemption, a project shows the total revenue. Column three shows the total estimated revenue without the project. And post-exemption shows two years following tax exemption period revenue with and without the project. And the final chart I'm showing this evening is the Lakewood revenue chart, showing the years, of course, of vacant land tax on the first column, and improved or completed project tax value, including the post-exemption period. The third column shows the tax exemption from collection, collection by Lakewood. And the fourth column is a rough average for all other taxes averaged over the years. I do want to point out that parking under eighteen B six hundred, six ten requires two spaces per a thousand square foot of building space, and the office unit is three hundred and twenty-nine square feet. So we determined that there would be two spaces needed for parking for the office or commercial space, and seven spaces required for the residential units. There is no street parking set aside for this proposal. And I just did want to point out one correction to the agreement. It states that SEPA is required, but it is not for this project. So next steps, of course, review and any comments or questions this evening. And based on your direction, make any amendments to our agreements and the certification and the resolution, and hopefully come back to present to City Council for approval on July fifth. And with that, that ends my presentation.
House Member Bokey?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Ms. Newton, a, a couple of things. I'm trying to figure out kind of where this is going, because I'm looking at Google Maps. Did, did they tear down a structure already or something on it?
It's a vacant. It's currently vacant. Yes. So there's Bristol, and there's like a cul-de-sac. And so if you, it's right at the end of the cul-de-sac on the east side. Pardon me?
Right next to Harborstone, right to the north of Harborstone.
It would be, I believe, north. It's very close to Harborstone. That's correct.
Yeah, okay. So it's a cul-de-sac, but that's how, but folks from Harborstone, when they go through the drive-through, go, are going through there. Yeah.
Potentially, yes.
He's, he's nodding his head. Okay. Thank you for, because one of my questions was going to be, because we've run into this before, somebody wanted to make, put in apartments, and they did. And they didn't meet the standards that we wanted them to do under the, they wanted to go with the old standards, which they were legally allowed to do. And you made mention of our new standards that we had for the downtown plan. And thank you for mentioning brick, which I didn't know, right? But what other things are we looking at? I see Mr. Buwer back there, too, so he can, he can be your lifeline if that's what you need. But, but what other kinds of things did they add to? I forgot, we use superior or something, or use some kind of language in eighteen A. And what are the things that they have to add to, to be able to meet those standards that they otherwise wouldn't have to?
Mr. Bokey, we can bring back the details at your next meeting, but they are required to pay for traffic mitigation fee, and that fee is approximately fifty-seven hundred dollars. So that's a part of the project. They're also required to do open space in lieu of, so they're going to need a six hundred square feet of open space, which they don't have, given the fact that this lot is sixty-three hundred square feet. So they are going to have to do an appraisal prior to a certificate of occupancy on that property and put that into an in-lu fee for open space to be used in the downtown. So those are two elements of this project. This is a very tight site with sixty-three hundred square feet. And the fact that they came in with housing units and a small office is pretty amazing. We spent a lot of time reviewing these plans and trying to make this work. So I applaud the developer for trying to do this, because this is a difficult site, and we don't have that many vacant lots in the downtown. So, and currently, they are on the cul-de-sac. People are parking on their property because there are people, there is sufficient parking in the, the area of, of Harborstone. But for proximity, they want to park fairly close. So that's going to probably change a little bit, but they do meet our minimum requirements under our code. I'd also just point out that they are required to do deed restrictions for the units, all, all seven. They can do low income, or they can do moderate income. And so that becomes a part of this project, which we will have to monitor from an annual basis to make sure that the, the numbers are coming in appropriately for the exemption. If they don't, the exemption goes away. So the action, the seat, at your next meeting is either to approve or deny the multifamily tax exemption. From the aspect of permitting and compliance with eighteen B, this project's ready to go with or without.
And then, and then quite the next question is for Ms. Newton. Thank, thank you very much, Mr. Buwer. The, the tax stuff, you have seven units plus a, plus a the office, and I don't know what will go into that office. So run through how you, you, you figure out the utility and the taxes on that and how much we would earn off that.
Yep. So there is a Ms. Brunel, and I worked on that, and there is a, a tax. And I'm, I'm happy to share, I didn't, I don't have that on my slides here today, but there are a number of taxes that are calculated. It's a spreadsheet that we utilize in order to, to calculate all of the taxes that go into, into the project. And then we have to also break out the commercial portion, because that does not qualify for the, the tax exemption.
Oh, okay. So the value?
The value is less the, the commercial.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay. So there is a property tax element to, to that, besides the ground, because that's always, the, the ground is always fully taxable.
Correct.
And then, but now it's also the unit.
It's, pardon me?
Office.
The office does not qualify for the exemption.
Correct. Okay. Okay, that's how you get there, because I was wondering, it seemed like a high number just for utilities. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any more other questions? House Member Anderson?
So is, getting back to the basics of my lack of understanding of the details here, all that's exempted is the real property tax on the increased value over the land.
The increased value of the new residential units only.
And does that include all elements of what you pay in your property tax bill or do surface water, management fees and conservation district fees that are sometimes characterized as fees instead of tax included?
Councilmember, yes, we have included all of those fees in the calculations.
But those are, those are exempted?
That is correct.
Now, a little tougher math question. I don't know all the millage rates offhand, but isn't it correct that when we exempt real property tax, the city's share of the real property tax that is excused is generally smaller than the anticipated utility tax to be collected? You just isolate those two numbers? That we, we don't, we get a smaller share of the, we get a, all our utility tax, we get a smaller share of the?
We get a smaller share, and it's, it is detailed in the chart for the revenue chart for Lakewood, the amount that was exempted.
But, yeah, there
You're asking if the
But the other was all lumped together, if I recall correctly. And my point is, I think from a selfish standpoint, we might, you know, might defer a bunch of tax that the school district might collect till future years. I mean, but we get more money in year one because we don't get much real property tax, and we get all the utility tax. And the utility tax isn't exempted. So any, any, my point is, any, from the city's standpoint, anytime you say yes to one of these, and it's the tipping point that allows it to go forward, you make money.
Mr. Buwer?
From my experience dealing with this program in the past, the multifamily tax exemption, the amount of, of savings that comes forward is really a tipping point for the banking industry, because it makes them feel comfortable with the project that it will be successful. Because if I take a look at some of the other performance we done on larger projects, the amount of revenue that is created or whatever is not as substantial as most people think it is. But it does provide the lending institution some level of security that this project will move forward. So that's, that's how I perceive or view this project and based upon comments I've received from developers who use the multifamily tax exemption program. It's just kind of a safety valve, if you will, makes finance companies and lending institutions comfortable with the project. As far as your question about what happens to the taxes when we approve these projects, it's a good question. I've attended several webinars with Department of Commerce on this subject. If the developer's not paying the taxes, who is? Because frankly, the taxes are being paid. They're just not being paid to this project. And from my, my understanding is that those, those taxes that are safe, they're not being paid on this project, are dispersed throughout the entire county. So all of us are paying for a few cents on each one of these multifamily projects. I'm hoping that it helps answer some of the questions.
Is it the fire district that actually passes a millage rate as opposed to having a millage rate set on the bond? But for the most part, I, I, I agree with you that it's, it's, the school district passes a dollar amount, and that's, and it's just divided among everybody.
Generally speaking, Councilmember Anderson, yes, because all governments actually, with the exception of a couple on an annual basis, adopt a levy amount and not a levy rate. So Mr. Buwer is right, the dollars would be spread, spread elsewhere.
Thank you.
Well, thank you for the, the information. I, I want to thank you for taking the time out of your vacation to come to present to us. But my question, I'm trying to identify exactly where you're talking. Is it the vacant lot across from the Allen's Realty?
So it's more, it's closer to Harborstone, so let's see. Go back on the
It's, it's, Deputy Mayor, it's Bristol and Tacoma.
It's between Harborstone and the childcare center.
Okay.
There's a small vacant lot in between.
I didn't, thank you. That was, it is very small. Thank you. Any other questions for Ms. Newton? Well, thank you so much.
And Deputy Mayor, just two other quick updates. Wanted to just let you know that your next study session next week, we'd like to bring back a proposal to transition from the Coban body-worn cameras that we've been currently working with to Axon body-worn cameras, and we'll have a comprehensive presentation why we believe that that's in the best interest of the city on a number of fronts, including technological benefits and just a greater service and a better, and a better product. In addition, we have an opportunity to also then In addition, we have an opportunity to also then transition from the COBAN in-car camera videos, which are working fine. But eventually they're going to have to be replaced. And so our recommendation is to move to go with Axon in-car camera videos. And then lastly, as part of the upcoming biennial budget, we were going to be proposing that our tasers are at end of life or quickly approaching there. And so that was something we were going to be proposing as part of the upcoming budget. However, given our conversations with Axon, what we'd like to do is actually acquire them now as part of the body worn, body worn cameras. So, you know, it's a bit of a mission creep on, actually, that's probably a bit of an understatement. It's a significant mission extension of, of our relationship moving from COBAN to Axon. And again, our Assistant Police Chief and one of our lieutenants, Jeff Wallwine, will be here next week to give you a walkthrough, talk through on that. So I just wanted to give you a courtesy heads up on that. Unfortunately, the COBAN cameras are just, they're just not working for us. We're just having all kinds of, all kinds of issues and all kinds of problems and we, we need to move on. And then secondly, so we're in June and always in the early to mid part of October. This body has a typically a half day retreat on a Saturday to talk about all that is your legislative agenda at the state, federal and county level. And our, our state government relations team is available on October 15th, or one of them is available on October 22nd, which are both Saturdays. So our recommendation is for you to hold that retreat on Saturday, October 15. And I'm hoping that that will work for all of you, if not for the majority of you. And I know several of you have already replied that it works, but I would ask if you could just take a look at your calendars and let me know one way or the other if that, if that works and would like to get that docketed. So with that, Deputy Mayor, that's my, my report.
Thank you. Are there any questions for City Manager? Councilmember Anderson?
Where are we with the conversion to PERS retirement system?
So Councilmember Anderson, we're in the process of actually, not this payroll, but our first payroll in July will be PERS. So our HR and our finance team are in the process of transitioning and moving, moving forward with that. So it's, it's a bit of a heavy lift, but I know we'll, we'll get there. And then on top of that, there's the opportunity for folks who had previously been in PERS to get a quote from, from DRS, Department of Retirement Systems, of what it would cost to buy back into that. And so HR will then be taking requests for that during the first part of July. And it's first come, first served because we expect that a number of staff might want to do that. And so then they'll just take them one by one.
Is council automatically recovered in the system or do we have to make an election? Or do we have to resolve to do it as a group?
Yeah, so we can get back to you on that, Councilmember Anderson. That's also on our list to do as well to address. Right now, though, just our focus is to get our current system transitioned so that our regular payroll can start sending what we need to do to, to DRS.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Yes, thank you, Deputy Mayor. I have not really a question, but I have a, I am unable to make the meeting next week, the joint school board. And I heard a couple other possible council members may also have some difficulties with it. So I was looking if we could reschedule that.
We could, actually, if that's something the council wants to do, we could reschedule it for later this year. That is a good time for the school board as well. So I know there's a lot of irons in the fire right now.
I'd like to see it rescheduled.
I think that'd be a good idea and we should probably develop an agenda rather than just coming and giving a report of what we did last week.
Are you agree with that? We're getting ahead, not to
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Thank you, Councilmember Volkey. Councilmember Farmer.
Thank you. Okay, are there any other questions or comments for the City Manager? If not, we will move on to council comments. Thank you, Mr. Caulfield. Councilmember Anderson?
Thank you. My first question was answered. Like my cohorts on the council to think about the possibility of introducing a no camping on public property ordinance. What I have been thinking about is, is an ordinance that prohibits someone from camping on any property owned by the public as a class lowest misdemeanor. And that would include DOT property, library property, school district property, sidewalks, streets, dead ends. Provided, of course, that they are offered assistance to comply with the Boise case. So here, we'll, we'll, we'll find you shelter, we'll refer you to services, but we won't let you camp on the sidewalk. And so if we can find the services for them and provide that to move along. And I'm particularly concerned with the library property, for example. Or if there is a, or a, or a school that is closed or being remodeled. So that's why I'm looking at public property in general. As I'm sure you've heard, one of Lakewood's most prominent citizens, George Warehouser, passed away about a week ago at 95. I was fortunate enough to know him at least casually. A true gentleman, philanthropist, community civic minded, service minded, he was a World War II vet, interrupting going to college. He then just coincidentally was a good classmate of George Herbert Walker Bush at Yale, who did the same type of thing. Ran to the Navy at 18 and then, then went back to school. I would like to consider an appropriate time. Memorial hasn't even been scheduled. There are some family members in the area doing a proclamation in his honor. To show you what a class act he was, a little moment to bet, he was the second most famous kidnapped victim in the United States when he was eight years old. And he came out of that unscathed, which was very fortunate, but the largest manhunt in Western US history. Twenty some years later, one of his kidnappers was released from prison and he gave him a job in a mill in Oregon. He said, well, he, he didn't hurt me. He deserves a chance. So real class act. So I think we should honor that. Plus, he's responsible for everything from pushing U-Dub Tacoma to riot of things like that in the area. And finally, I had the opportunity for the last week, for the second time in my life to visit a place that our city manager would call Fenley Park. And they even spell it that way on some of the T-shirts. I, I splurged and was in an area where they serve sit-down food. And there were four Boston police officers, lieutenant sergeant, two officers who were just sitting down to dinner after the kind of the dust had settled on the game getting started and I was back getting some popcorn or something. So I stopped by, introduced myself and told them I wanted to thank them, remembering from 2009 when we lost our officers, that they sent a very large contingent. I didn't tell them this, but I, I wrote, actually rode from my then downtown office on the on the Linklight rail with the carload of Boston police officers to go to the memorial service. And they interrupted me when I said I was from Lakewood and we lost. They knew. One of them was actually part of the contingent that came out. And they were very appreciative. I told them that, that nearly as much as we were. So that was kind of a, a neat moment. And, and a real neat facility there. This time I could actually see the game plate. I bought a better ticket. But that's all.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Moss. Just a couple of items. Planning Commission continued its work last Wednesday on the tree retention ordinance, working their way through it. I believe the next step is early July and they're going to have a public hearing. So we'll, we'll see how that goes because it'll be interesting. There's a lot of things, there, there are a lot of moving parts on, on the ordinance and so it'll be interesting to hear what the public has to say about, about the proposed changes. The other thing is I went to Carnival of Cultures on Saturday night, a little bit chilly. It's only June, of course, so and the deputy mayor was there. She was there longer than I was, actually. And a good crowd, not a huge crowd, but given that it was threatening rain throughout the afternoon and early evening, I, I think it, it did pretty well. I thought the AMC was wonderful. She kind of kept the crowd in it and the, the different dance performances and musical performances were very cool. I think it, I think it met my expectations as to, to what they're doing. So we're what the plan was. And so I'm glad we could use the Colonial Center. It's a, it's a big area and we should be very proud of, of it because you can kind of move around fairly well. And it was nice to have a lot of vendors there. Did not make to the farmer's market tonight, but next week, I think, is the first farmer's market slash concert. So
It's gonna be nice.
So it's a big, it's a big evening. So it'll be very cool. So I'm hoping to make that if we don't have this other meeting now. So thank you very much.
Councilmember Farmer?
Thank you, Ms. Deputy Mayor. Other than to let the City Manager know that October 15th works for me for the legislative retreat, I'm good. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Bell?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. I was unable to make the Carnival of Cultures, but I did have some friends go that reported back and said it was fabulous. So I'm looking forward to that. And I am looking forward to the combo of the farmer's market and the concerts also. And I just wanted to say, I really appreciated Betty Capistani's presentation on the accelerator program. I think it's great information. I think it's a great program. And I'm really happy that Lakewood is a part of that and what we've already done and what we're going to be doing. So thank you.
Thank you. And I too appreciated that. There's something that's been missing from our area for some time. So I'm glad to see that it's here and they have taken advantage of it. I did attend the Air Force Local Chapter meeting on June 14th. And the Air Force Ball is still set for September 10th. It's going to be at the Convention Center in Tacoma. And I talked about the Lakewood Farmer's Market and the Carnival of Cultures. Some of them did stop by my booth to say hello and thanks for the information. So one way to help get the word out. And I did stop by the Historical Society on my way in tonight, but they had just started that meeting. I missed the social hour. So but I got to say hello and I thanked them for being there. And on the, for the Colonial Center, a lot of comments on they so appreciate that location and it's being used. So that's all I have. Is there anything else that needs to come before the council, council, council? City Manager?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Real quick, Councilmember Anderson proposed two items. One was to develop a no camping and public property ordinance as well as a proclamation for Mr. Warehouser. Just wanted to make sure if the council's okay with that general direction, we can move forward on those.
I think we all agree with that. Get a head nod on that.
Okay, thank you, Deputy Mayor.
Ms. Deputy Mayor?
Councilmember Farmer?
I am not opposed to having a discussion about camping on public property. I would love to learn more from a staff perspective on what other cities are doing regionally. How much of, of a problem do we have in Lakewood on public property? Just a general history. That would be helpful.
Okay, I see the head nod from my council.
Thank you.
So we'll be, that will happen. Thank you. Send anything else for the good of the order. And I would declare the public to come closed.